For spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the...
Please stand for the question invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the high states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today I'd just like to recognize the UNO men's hockey team. As you all know, they've, uh, a new territory for a school. Uh, they're now into the Frozen Four Finals for NCAA. A very impressive mark. It's great to see Omaha in the company of perennial hockey powers, Providence and BU and, um, North Dakota. So, we wish them well in their upcoming game on April 9th. And, uh, also an issue of warning to all parents watching today, to remind them if you have devious kids like mine, that tomorrow is April Fool's Day. So when you go home tonight, make sure you're on your guard.
City Clerk Certified Publication Data Record, on March 27th, notes for a pre-council and regular city council meeting, March 31st, 2015. The current copy of the Opening Act is posting a white binder on the east wall of alleged chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law. My only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only attract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute the electronic device.
Zoning ordinance on final reading of planning board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a planned unit development overlay district located northeast of 30th and Fort Streets. Approve the development plan. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing number five is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Pauls?
Thompson?
Gurnett?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Five is passed, seven to zero. We'll take items six through 10. It's one case. Six is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 192nd and Pacific Street from agricultural district to R6, low-density multifamily residential district. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Seven is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district. Uh, to approve the development plan. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eight is resolution to preliminary plat-- revised preliminary plat entitled Pacific Renaissance, formerly known as Pacific Village, is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nine is the plat entitled Pacific Renaissance is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 10 is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items number six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Halverson.
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Halverson. I'm a landscape architect with Olson Associates here in Omaha. 2111 South 67th Street in Exarment. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you again. We've been in front of you a couple times and I think that we've had a lot of neighborhood meetings and we've come to some very good consensus according to a lot of the, the participants in the meetings. Just a really quick history again. We're at the corner of 192nd. The map is north, so north is up 192nd and Pacific. We all know that the, the Magenta area is an area of mixed use and with that, we're allowed, per the master plan codes and that kind of thing, about 250 units adjoining that. Our first go-around, we were showing, thank you, 205 units based on the fact that there are the remainder of the apartment units were there. With this project, we would now have then completed the 250 units allowed in this corner. We met with neighborhood opposition. I'm sure there are some neighbors here today to, to confirm some of these things. Mr. Irish, who is here with me today to answer questions, also went back to the owner of the property and said, "We cannot get the, the density that you think this land is worth." And came back with a reduction in density to, what is that? 200 and, or 118 units in, in that, in that area? The biggest deal was the change from three-story to two-story. All have, both had integral garages. Both are luxury products. So, this, this was, the landscaping, everything was approved by the neighbors. You know, they, they still would rather not have that here, but we're, we, we can do this, we think. The biggest controversy as we got into it was, was not the actual structures, was actually the access through this. The city is all about connectivity. We are all about connectivity. We get that. We understand that. Dr. Kuhn lives directly to the west of us and the blue arrows show the access point from Marcy as it would come through this project. And the city asked us to realign our building so we could get an access to this undeveloped quote-unquote "property" to the west. We are, we are kind of agnostic about that. We, we, our project works with or without it. I mean, we really don't, don't care. So the, the last version of this site plan then shows that connection, shows the two-story buildings, shows the required green space, shows the over-landscaping of the project and, and just, it's just a, a nice project. We've, we have this triple row of evergreens along the, the Pacific Street. So, I think the only real issue that we'll hear about today is the access points. So with that, I will, here is, here is another image that we have that shows the connectivity. We completely understand that it's in the master plan. Again, Dodge at the north, Pacific on the south, 192nd on the east and 204th. That's the square mile of the master plans that we'd want to have the quarter-mile, the half-mile, and the three-quarter mile somehow come through both ways. We always have a situation when we have Dodge Street where the access is only at the miles. So, the red lines show how you can get through this neighborhood in several different locations at the three-quarter, the quarter, and the half. Same thing along this way. Same thing along Pacific Street. Obviously, we just don't have it at Dodge Street. So we can get there without having that little access point right there. We really feel that while this is being developed, that road can come back and connect to these acreage parcels that are there. So Mr. Irish is here. He has images of the architecture. He has, um, information for you on the number of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, if you need that. Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Kevin Irish, 16912 Audrey Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68136. Thanks for seeing us again today. I think Doug has done a nice job laying out the, the groundwork that we've, uh, to get to this point where we are today. The, the ingress into Dr. Kuhn's property and, uh, that Doug has alluded to as I've visited with Dr. Kuhn over the last few months and emailed back and forth. That's something that we would prefer not to have. I, I know that, that the doctor would prefer not to have it into his property. We don't think that it serves any purpose while we get it and understand that the city wants the connectivity. Um, we don't feel that it's really necessary. I suppose I could point out something like Sterling Ridge where that, they don't have any connectivity into their development at 132nd Pacific. So I don't know that that's that much different. But, uh, we have made numerous concessions, as I know you're all aware of. I've emailed everyone. Uh, we think we have a beautiful project. We're excited about it. Uh, we own the ground now. We've closed on it. And, uh, we're, uh, here today to, to ask for approval. And I'm here to answer any questions, um, that you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents?
Bruce Kuhn, 19330 Pacific Street. I'm not really here to oppose this at all. I am here to ask you to possibly remove the, uh, street stub that you have into my property. Number one, it goes right through where my backyard would be. It goes right through, uh, very, very close to the, uh, house that's to the west of me. And there's also a house right in the center of the street that this would be connecting to.
Doug, do you have, do you have your...
Yes.
So I would, I would like to see that stub-street eliminated because I feel that, um, if we ever decide to develop our property, that this street will be in it, will be in a place that will really destroy our ability to develop. I would like to see the, uh, stub taken from, let me see this. From this point right here and move down in this area where then we could connect with, um, um... Gosh.
Fire Ridge.
Fire Ridge and still stay out of the way of, of the homes that are there. I think putting that road there, it's, it's gonna, uh, it's really gonna do no good in Kevin's, uh, uh, development and it certainly won't help, help us or the, or the property to our west. So I, I would, uh, I would like to see the council remove that, uh, that connecting stub. That's really my only concern.
I did want to ask, uh, Doug and Kevin a question. Is the fence between our properties, is that, uh, also placed in there?
Yes.
There's a wrought iron fence.
Okay. Thank you.
Doug Halverson. The property line along the west, all along the west, would have a wrought iron fence six feet tall along the whole property line. And then the, it's not wrought iron. It looks like wrought iron. It's typical aluminum-type fencing. But it's along the entire property and along the little jog right there along the nicely property. And then that's heavily landscaped and burned. We have enough soil to do burm-ing.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Irish? You have to restate your name.
Kevin Irish.
I've heard three different things. I've heard that there was an agnostic view towards, uh, the stub. Agnosticism is always an intriguing philosophy for me, but I'll get into that at another time. Then I heard that didn't want it at all. And then I also heard that, "Let's move it to the south." Can it be moved to the south?
Doug Halverson. I can speak to that after talking with the Planning Department. The Planning Department would really like the access and they want the accesses to be as straight and true as possible. Right now, you look at the way we used to do this and this is not the way we're doing it these days. It certainly doesn't take a Boy Scout, but it certainly takes somebody a lot of thought to get through that. They would much rather have these much smoother, cleaner access points. And this was a cleaner, smoother access point according to the city. Again, the, the person coming from here would come down this, drive through past the garages, just like you would do drive past the garages there, and we would relocate this building and do something differently with that. We'd still have the same density. That just wasn't the Planning Department's preference.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, if I could, thank you, gentlemen. If I could have, uh, the city representative come up.
Dave Fanswell, City Planning.
Dave, you've heard, um, don't have it at all, to move it. Could you respond to both of those?
Sure. Um, I think I'll address the second question first. To, um, move it to the south would require, obviously, an amendment to the PUD that's before you today, but the, the plat subdivision that creates the, the buildable area, the buildable lots for this subdivision. Um, well, I guess it was too soon. On that, on that plat, there's an access easement from 192nd along this street and along this street. So that was part of the plating process. So to remove it, to move in a different location, require that plat to be amended to allow for, what I've heard, an entrance or a, a connection down here. Doug is correct. You know, to have, to have the public enter here and go through basically the multifamily development is a little laborious and not the most direct route. So, the department's recommendation is to approve as it's been presented to us and the Planning Board and now to you folks. I'd like to say that this is about, this is, uh, this is about where the connection, um, is shown on, on the PUD plan. We envision, it, it obviously can't go straight across because as you, as you can see, there's homes that are built in Fire Ridge Estates subdivision. So punching it through straight is not an option at this point. Um, but there's a, there's a stub right here along 195th, just east of Mason. We've seen a few, uh, we've had some conversations about this property in the past. We would envision, and we've told these folks, that that street would have to do something like that before they could redevelop that piece of property. Again, as it is today, it can be used and, and, and nobody's gonna require that connection to be made. But if and when that property redevelops, we would ask for dedication of right-of-way or at least a public access easement to connect these two points.
Okay. If Mr. Kuhn never, uh, moves, he just stays there? Will there ever be a street in his yard?
No.
No.
We, we won't. What, what we're doing, and as you folks know, we set up the possibility when, when stuff comes in to be redeveloped, as in this case, we set up the possibility of future connectivity. We can't force adjoining property owners to dedicate right-of-way, to dedicate a public access easement. But what we do is we set up, up those connections for the future. So, you, no, I guess the answer to your question is no. Nobody's going to go to the neighbor to the west and say, "Okay, now that we've got a street stub that stops at the property line, we're gonna require you to put in a street." We wouldn't do that.
Now that's if his property stays as is. What if he redevelops it and then still lives there?
If it, if, if this property comes in for subdivision approval, we would require a, a street to be punched through there.
So for, for Dr. Kuhn to keep it as is, he would just have to not redevelop?
Correct.
Okay. Do you hear this request often? Is this, is this a, a normal request to not have these streets go through?
Um, every once in a while, I'd, you know, it happens. Um, we've heard it plenty in the past, yes.
And generally speaking, um, those requests aren't granted, are they?
No, they're not.
Okay. Again, your rationale is because of the connectivity?
Yeah, if I could ex, ex, expand on that.
Okay.
I'll put this back up. If this, if this connection's not made, um, anybody living in this new development to go west of the development would have to go out to 192nd Street at the eighth mile here, come southbound on 192nd and then west on Pacific. And I think we've all heard as part of this project and as part of other projects, but especially this cor, this intersection of 192nd Pacific, we've all heard how dangerous this intersection is. So if we don't provide for that connectivity in between the major streets, you know, at the eighth or that quarter or the half, whatever it is, then what happens to these major arterials is they become, there's more traffic on them because there's not connectivity east or west, north or south, which is why we require that connectivity for vehicles. Uh, what this also promotes is, you know, in the, in the future, if the street goes through, it, it provides for alternative forms of transportation. People can actually walk, ride their bike, uh, do other things as opposed to, I guess, not if there's no connectivity.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to say, sir?
I don't believe so.
Thank you, Mr. Fanswell.
You're welcome.
To my colleagues, based upon, um, it's no secret that when I can fight on behalf of, um, neighbors that I do so and I do so vigorously. And, uh, sometimes I win and sometimes I don't. But, uh, the, the appeal process for our board isn't always to, to grant these requests. And in this particular time, I try to, to weigh the pros and the cons and it seems to me that even though both sides have legitimate, um, concerns that I think that the city's concerns and the city's vision outweighs, uh, Dr. Kuhn's request. And so I would, uh, move the motion as is.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Six through 10 are passed, seven to zero. Item number 11, ordinance to amend sections 55, 924, 25, 27, 28, 933, 34, uh, regarding urban design. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 11 is today. Are there any proponents, please? Mr. Milton?
Good afternoon. Jed Milton, Urban Design Manager for the City Planning Department. Uh, for your consideration today is a series of amendments to Article 22 of the zoning code. A process was initiated in fall of 2013 to reconvene the original technical advisory group who helped to draft the ordinance in 2007. It's approximately 50 members of a varied stakeholder group. We, um, invited, uh, participants to make recommendations or suggestions or voice concerns about the code, whether it was working or some challenges they had. And we sorted through, uh, for a year, uh, various issues and concerns and we broke out into small stakeholder groups and addressed, uh, different topic areas in detail. And at the end, we came away with some recommendations for improvements to the code, which are before you today. Uh, we've had them approved by the technical advisory group. Uh, the Urban Design Review Board has reviewed them and approved them, as well as the Planning Board. So we seek your approval today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
11 is passed, seven to zero. Liquor, item number 12, Hy-Vee Restaurant, six at 9707 Q Street. Catering liquor license. No application, no location. They currently hold a Class I liquor license.
Public hearing on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Andrew Oakham with Hy-Vee, just here for any questions you have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
12 is adopted, seven to zero. Items 13 and 14 will take one hearing. They're all appointments of Stephen Williams, two managers of different Bag &amp; Save and Food for Less. Uh, 13 is Bag &amp; Save at 5110 South 108th Street. A is at 5019 Grover. B is 2650 North 90th. C is 15370 Weir Street. D is 14444 West Center Road. E is 3003 North 108th Street. 14 is Stephen Williams' manager for the No Frills supermarkets at 8005 Blondo. A is 3548 Q Street. B is 7402 North 30th. C is 820 North Saddle Creek Road. D is 3026 South 24th. E is 4240 South 50th. And F is 13215 West Center Road.
Public hearings on number 13 and 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Stephen Williams with, uh, No Frills Bags.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. So you'll be a busy person managing all these locations. Just for, uh, yeah, just for the public's knowledge. So we typically, um, take these all independently, uh, when they have different locations like this because, but when there's a corporate presence like this, uh, it's not unusual to have one person's name advised on all of them, even though there's technically different managers, managers at their stores, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we're sure you'll watch them closely.
Correct.
Great. Thank you. There's a motion in a second? Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
13 and 14 are approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an eye placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken up by city council media following the consent agenda in the order which they were in movement unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 15 through 18 were held on March 24th. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
15 through 18 are passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items number 19 through 35 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the, the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent. And if you are a proponent or an opponent, I know we have some here to address number 34, right? So please come down. Mr. Battershell.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Battershell, 3404 South 94th Street. Uh, here is a proponent of item number 34, the funding for One Omaha. Since 2012, the neighborhood associations of Omaha have worked closely with you as well as each other to develop this strategy that should help carry and strengthen neighborhood associations in the city of Omaha forward. Uh, we appreciate Councilman Jerem for your time originally in helping convene us as the alliances. We have some representatives present, uh, today. We represent all parts of the city, uh, came together under what we call the United Neighborhood Alliances of Omaha. That was a task force that was convened to transition into what we're calling One Omaha, which is before you today for funding. When we met with Mayor Stothart, which, uh, at that time, we developed a strategy that said the city would be in for part and we would go find private money for part. We are in a two-to-one match at this point, city funds to private funds. Uh, we're more than halfway towards our goal, which met our contractual obligation to the city. Uh, and so we've hired Julie Smith, who's there behind the podium a little bit. If you can see her, uh, she's, she'll be doing the day-to-day management. Now, the way we structured this was not to create a new nonprofit, which was also our strategy. The strategy was to, uh, find a nonprofit whose goals and objectives aligned with increasing citizen participation in democracy. So we approached many nonprofits in the city of Omaha and identified that Nebraskans for Civic Reform, which is a newer nonprofit that's housed in the UNO Community Engagement Center, was a great fit. It was a great fit from a cost-sharing perspective. It was a great fit for utilizing funds, uh, well, to ensure that most of the funds that we raise can go directly into impacting and increasing neighborhood associations. And that's really important for this, is that we create a baseline in this first year, which Julie's tasked with, reaching out and creating that baseline so that we can really start to measure and increase the effectiveness and awareness of neighborhood associations in Omaha. So respectfully, with that, I would take any questions or ask for your support in number 34.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Mr. Jerem?
It's, it's hard to believe that so much time has passed since the Neighborhood Center closed, but, um, it's going on two years. And to reach the point where we are today, which involved a needs assessment that UNO was contracted to perform, to having stakeholder meetings, to neighborhood input sessions all over, uh, the city, um, helped us form the, the, what we were calling the alliances of alliances. And that was so silly, we, they, they had to come up with a name and, you know, that's Battershell's kinda line of work. So, this whole One Omaha thing, I think he had a large part to do with. Uh, but whatever you call it, uh, the mission is simply empowering neighborhoods to, um, make them more vibrant, safer, healthier places to live and to engage the people who live in those places in the process of doing that. And so, the biggest component I see happening here is the educational component. But, um, the place where this will be housed at the Engagement Center is already bustling with activity on the UNO campus. The, the word has gotten out. And I'm, I'm sure as, uh, this gets approved, that more and more people will be hearing from them as to just how pleased they are that we have someone now working in this area. So, I'm pleased to support it and wish you luck. So I'm pleased to support it and wish you luck, and can't wait to see you out in the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Gurnett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I might be a little more blunt, but when the rocket-propelled grenade hit the Neighborhood Center, the Omaha flag rose from the ashes, and hence, One Omaha. And I could not be prouder of how everybody came together, not just from one group, not just from two groups, but the city came together. We knew something had to be done, because we lost that resource of building blocks for neighborhoods. And they came in the debris, they found those remaining building blocks, and took those and made something out of it. Took the time, got the input from around the city, put it together with a workable plan, brought that plan to the city, and we're starting to see those steps come into fruition. Hasn't been easy, as Councilman Jerem said, this has taken a while, but we're going to see the fruits of their labor. We're going to see stronger neighborhoods, healthier neighborhoods, safer neighborhoods, and it's going to be coming from those from within. This is what this is all about. And having the opportunity to be one of them that supports that. Can't wait until the vote comes out. Thank you, Mr. President.
And that vote is now. Is that a motion?
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
19 through 35 are adopted, seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number 36, special ordinance allowing special tax removal of litter, group number 2015-04, we have an amendment.
Public hearing was held on March 24th. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
36 is passed as amended, seven to zero. Item number 37, special ordinance allowing special tax for cutting and clearing of weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, group number 2015-5, A is an amendment, B is communications from Wells Fargo Home Mortgage, and C is communications to parks.
Public hearing was held on March 24th.
Yes.
Is that moving the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
37 is passed as amended, seven to zero. Item 38, special ordinance allowing special tax for cutting and clearing of weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, group number 2015-6, we have an amendment.
Public hearing was held on March 24th. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended?
Yes.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
38 is passed as amended, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing agenda items 39 through 44 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item number 45, ordinance to create a city workforce development initiative through a city construction contract allowance program, creating sections 10-31 through 10-336 to create allowances in certain city projects for contractors committed to hiring, training, and retaining employees for certain economically distressed census track, and recipients of certain government subsidies.
Public hearing on number 45 is today. I know we have several folks here to address this item, just to give us a sense of who's here and who intends to speak. If you're a proponent of the ordinance, please raise your hand in the audience. So for the record, maybe about 20. And out of those proponents, who intends to speak today? Thank you. Any opponents of this today? We have two, and probably intend to speak as well. We'll start with the public hearing today. Proponents, please. Mr. Love?
How are you, everyone? My name is Preston Love Jr. I live at 2619 Brown, and I'm going to reach in my pocket, watch it, to get my glasses. I have a lot of emotion about this ordinance, and a lot to say, but to net it out, I wrote a statement, and if you'll allow me, I will read that statement. That's why I need my glasses. I speak, ladies and gentlemen, as a native of my beloved community, North Omaha. I speak for many North Omaha contractors, contract laborers, the North Omaha-based United Minority Contractors Association, numerous neighborhood associations, and supported by many of our North Omaha clergy. Though I am a community advocate, I do not claim to represent 100% of my community. Neither do you, I don't think. What I can assure you, however, is that there is no disagreement about the realities facing my community, North Omaha. Vast poverty, residuals of vast poverty, which are hopelessness, crime, violence, and a reduced tax contribution. You reduce poverty, ladies and gentlemen, in North Omaha, you will increase the hopes of many, reduce crime and violence, reduce the costs related to policing the community, and increase the flow of taxes, among many other positive effects to North Omaha and the city overall. The findings section in this ordinance, in 10331, states it well about poverty as part of the findings. This city has been nearly blind, I just had cataract operations on both of my eyes. This city is blind from economic cataracts, if you will, blind to economic inclusion. The solution is simple, but underutilized. Provide jobs, business opportunities, contracts for North and South Omaha contractors, black and white. These, those wages and revenues to our residents will have a dynamic and positive ripple effects on our community as those dollars circulate through the community. Sooner or later, the leadership of Greater Omaha, the community, and this city government will realize that the positive overall social and economic impact of dealing with solutions to poverty in the northeast sector of the city has so many, so many positive effects. So where are we? This ordinance will go a long way to improve one cataract, jobs. We applaud this positive movement, and the leadership, I commend you as a city council to consider this bill, and so I commend you. This is a needed ordinance and one solution to the initiative directed towards jobs, jobs for the poor, and challenge community. This is, is this solution perfect? No, it is not. But a positive step forward that will impact poverty by stimulating jobs. We highly support this initiative and hope that each and every one of you do. If you address and pass this ordinance, you will be addressing and passing poverty. In contrast, we have challenged the executive branch to address contractors. The other cataract, if you will, providing work and inclusion of North Omaha contractors in the $2.3 billion CSO project is critical. Most of the work is moved on in our backyard. We don't, we don't think the city is ready to step up to a discussion of the contracts for the whole city, but surely, we can step up to contracts that are in North Omaha's own community, and quite frankly, in the South Omaha community. But we are challenging the executive branch to set a policy to put in place a plan for implementation, performance measures coupled with goals, program tracking, and accountability. Get the other cataract removed, address the lack of economic inclusion for the North and South Omaha contractors, and we'll have a clear vision, a clear vision for the new city of Omaha, which is addressing all residents. So I respectfully request that the city council ensure that any plan submitted by the executive branch regarding contractors be fully vetted with the aforementioned components and with the stakeholders from our community, many of which are here. They're here, contractors, clergy, neighborhood associations, those are the stakeholders. Those are the ones who are experiencing the poverty. And so, I'd ask that if the executive branch presents you with a plan of action, that you vet it with us, the stakeholders, number one, and that it has all of the components that are necessary to make it happen. So I appreciate that and your attention on that. In addition to this ordinance dealing with jobs, we would hope that your leadership will include serving as a check and balance to the executive branch. I don't want to take a lot of time more on that issue, but I do want, again, in summary, say congratulations for addressing this one cataract, and I'd hope that you go ahead and get it removed by passing, and that down the road, when the city steps up with a plan of action for the other cataract, that you will, will be stewards and do that well. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? There may be along the way here. We'll take the next proponent.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you intend to speak, if you wouldn't mind coming down to the front row there, and we'll get you lined up, just to be efficient here. Go ahead.
My name's Brandon Thomas. I'm with Mo-Hauling, Mo-Hauling and More. I've been in business, um, three years almost now. I started my business because I was disenfranchised, like the rest of my guys down there. We don't have no leaders like we used to have no more. So in order for you guys to say, how can we stop the violence, or what can we do about the violence, you gotta be there to see the violence happen. You gotta feel it, because if you never felt nothing, you don't know what to do about it. So I lived there. So what I came up with was Mo-Hauling. It's a construction company, it's a lawn care company, snow removal. The only problem we having is, we lack the funds. We have the guys with the skills to do it. It's the jobs that don't hire the, the guys with the skills that they can do it, because when we do get out of jail, they don't want to help us out. So in order for us to do, to stop, half of the problem is, you gotta get some leaders out here. You gotta get some motivated guys that's willing to give guys chances to get jobs back. You know what I'm saying? Everybody is scared of the guys when they get out of jail, or felons, and don't want to give these guys a chance. That's not going to build the community back. It starts with the future. Y'all just the past now. Y'all trying to figure out the problem, but we the future. So if you can fix the future, you can fix your solving problem about the crimes. I hang with these guys every day in the streets. I'm with them. I get these guys jobs, I give them a chance, I talk to them, I get to know them, I interact with them. They lack parenting. We don't have mentors. We ain't got no moms and dads. I ain't had a mom and dad, man, in so long. My dad died when I was little. I ain't never had no role models. So for me to get out here and do it by myself, and help the guys that don't have nothing, and I don't have nothing, to help the guys, to give them a little bit of something, and I see what they seeing me, y'all need to try to reach out to the young, to the future. If you ain't got the future, you ain't got nothing in your hand. So I got a plan. I figure out I could get these guys together, like tomorrow, I'm going to a meeting. I got 10 gang members I'm about to bring, man, and these guys need help. They want to change their life, but ain't nobody helping them change nothing, like, and the only resource we got to get in our kids' pampers and get in our kids' diapers, to take care of our kids, from our water getting shut off, to water bills, is, it's ridiculous that we, as a young people, gotta suffer like that, when we had leaders like y'all in the community that was supposed to make sure this didn't happen. But y'all let it happen to us. Now it's for us to fix it. But if y'all can't help us fix it, we ain't gonna make it nowhere but keep going back to jail. So we need help, and I feel like I spoke on the disenfranchised community part and the people that's living it. I, I feel like I spoke for the guys in jail, because they need help too. It's just not meant for us to just break down like this, man, like, my mom, all the tragedy that I saw, it was the effect of my life. So now I want to do better for my daughter, but I can't do better for my daughter because I don't got the funds. Or I lack, I'm trying to get a job. I don't got the, the good credit score. I got the, I got the talent, and I got the skills, but I don't got the credit score to fit the job. So now, it's not just my skills hold me down or my education, it's my credit score hold me down, because of the position I went for to try to get, but that, I lack that, that's why I lack, my credit, that's all. But they still hold me down for the job position. So it's a lot of people out there that don't, we don't have families, or we don't have people that care for us, so we go to the drug dealers, we go to the dope boys, because they give us love. It ain't about what they can do for us, how can they do it? They talk to us, they get to know us. That's the only way you can raise a child, you gotta talk to them, you gotta get to know them, you gotta show them things. But if you just let them run wild, this is how y'all, this is what, this is what we is, we the product of our environment. So in, in order for y'all to stop the problem of your environment, y'all gotta put in, y'all gotta do y'all part. I'm with these guys every day. I just walk down the street, talk to guys at the Chubb store standing outside. Man, what y'all doing out here, man? Man, we just trying to make a dollar, man, trying to, trying to buy a pop soda. I said, you know what, come and work with Mo-Hauling. I'll at least give you a job to rake some grass up. You don't need a degree or nothing to come and work with me. You know what he told me, like, man, that's the best thing somebody ever did for me in my life. I let him rake the grass, I brought him, let him rake my grass, paying him $25. You know what he did? Brought him, brought his brother something, brought his other friend something. Teamwork make the dream work. But if you ain't got no team, you ain't got no unity. So I just wanted y'all to, I wanted to just come down here and just tell y'all how I feel on behalf of the disenfranchised people.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
My name is Willie Hamilton, 4200 North 30th. I know a lot of the folks behind, behind the podium, if you will. I guess I'll start this way. About four years ago, we went inside Tecumseh, Stay Pen, and a lot of the guys were doing 20 years, 50 years to life. A lot of these guys are not getting out. They wasn't talking about themselves, they was talking about folks that was coming behind them, that was going to be doing two, three, four years, and that's going to be out, and that the fact of the matter is, a lot of these guys are going to be back three years out. They can't get traditional jobs, like a lot of folks get. That's why the trades are so important, because the barriers that most people face in traditional jobs, you won't have to face during the trades. I went to the carpentry union, and I asked them, would they have problems with individuals with ex-felons? 90% of the folks raised their hand were ex-felons in the trades. That's why we actually went out and wanted to partner with the trades, because we believe the trades are the key. They have a brotherhood, they have a mentorship in there, what a lot of our folks are actually going to need. So we went out, and we, we actually created the Commandant Center, and that's why I'm here today. Councilman Jerem, we go way back, and he brought this, this, this item before us, and that's why I'm supporting it. Partly, I think we do have some way to go. We have other programs out there that are not included in this mix, and I'm talking about the Urban Pre vocational Training Program. We actually doing a lot of things that I don't think a lot of other folks have the ability to be able to do. So how do we fit in this whole mix when it comes to the Urban Pre vocational Training Program? Also, I'm hoping everybody take a picture of the folks behind me, because people want to say that we are split when it comes to North Omaha, but the fact of the matter is, we're all on the same page. We just have a disagreement on how we get there. We all are suffering from the same thing, and that is poverty. And we know the answer to our problems is be able to create jobs for ourselves, so we can hire our own. But to be able to do that, we need to be put in a position to be able to get the resources that we need to be able to build to capacity. The mayor and everybody's talking about they want to do it in-house. If you truly want to do it in-house, stop having separate meetings with separate groups. The issue has to be about transparency. Everybody needs to be in the room and put it on the table so that you won't go back into the community and have all this talking at the mouth. And that's what's happening. The reason why I came down here is, Willie Barney, I support what he does. People want to say that we against each other, we're not. We just having different philosophies. The fact of the matter is, we all gotta come together in order to address this issue. And for us in the black community, it has to be us. We cannot allow folks on the outside to say we are not together because that's bogus. The fact of the matter is, this is a good start, but it's only a start. And if the mayor and the city council is truly, truly serious about impacting change, then please, call a meeting. Call a community meeting and bring everybody to the table and let everybody tell you what you're capable of doing. If you're capable of doing five thousand dollars, don't say you can do fifty. Do the five thousand and then be in a position two to three years later to get to the fifty thousand. We have work to do, but I think we all put our personal feelings aside and look at the bigger picture. It's how do we change what's going in our community? And the answer is simple. It's simple. More jobs, less violence. You don't need to be a mathematician to be able to figure that out. All we asking for, give us an opportunity to have access. Equal access and opportunity. And if you give us that, we'll take care of the rest. But also, give us the tools to be able to do it. If you don't give us a line of credit, then how do you expect us to be able to go and do some of the things that we're talking about? There are some things that y'all guys can do that can make this an equal playing field. You're talking about inclusion, you're talking about diversity, then do it, don't talk about it. Be open-minded for folks to be able to bring you a plan to the table that we can all get behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Next proponent.
My name is Mr. Charles Johnson, 25, uh, 6th Street, 27 North 34th Street is my address. I'm coming, speaking on the same subject, but I'm bringing up Making a Better Way, which is also my nonprofit program. I have introduced this program to Mr. Gray and to the mayor. And one of the problems we have is communication and unity not with our side. Well, we don't have unity with you guys. So I'm here today to bring up unity in the community as a whole. It's kind of like we split off. It's like in our area, everything that's worth something is being put over here. We don't like coming outside in our hood and we don't see nice thing. Because the doors on this side, like you guys that make that decision, it's like y'all leaving us out. It's like we're not part of the community or the community. And the reason why I say that, because they're not coming up with ways to help the people in the community, nor are they spending money to make our community look better for when we step outside our doors, we can feel proud. Making a Better Way has come up with a solution. And by the way, Mr. Gray, I know that you and I have some things, but even when Mr. Gray has said aside that, and we have come together and we beginning to talk and coming up with a structure that involves you guys. We have always come up with a structure within ourselves. But the problem is coming up with a structure that involves us all because it all affects us all. So what I'm asking is that you guys involve yourself as though you're in our community, as though you're living in our community. We don't even see you guys, but y'all make the decisions for y'all and for us. But in order for y'all to make decisions for us, y'all need to come down and visit with us and see what we're going through and then you understand what you're not understanding. We got you guys in your seats for one reason. Because we have faith in y'all, we believe in y'all, we, that y'all, y'all, y'all are the seniors in determining what happens in the communities. But if you leave the little people out, because that's what we are to y'all, which it makes it, y'all make it seem like, that we're not important, that we're invisible, that our community is even invisible. Look how they done our community, even with the street repairs, they just throw stuff in people's yard. In businesses, block businesses, the, uh, the, on 24th Street, it look like a junkyard. They don't do their community like that. And not only that, I watch them in their community, I'm in Charles Construction, I do this work and I'm in y'all communities, but when they leave our community, they sweep that out the way. They make sure it's powered up neatly, they just take ours and just do it any kind of way. And it makes us feel left out. So how you gonna ask us to join in, anticipate and become effective when y'all leaving us, making us feel left out, like we don't even have opinion in our community? One of the things in Making a Better Way, one of the young men that just spoke, he's in our organization. We teaming up with Improv One, 360, Workforce, Goodwill, North Omaha Contractor Alliance and Training. Because we understand the things a lot of y'all forgetting, the main thing lacking in our situation is structure. And we understand that in Making a Better Way, structure must first be developed. And we have that in our, in our program. Structure. Why is structure so important? Because structure makes you understand the things that's interfering with progress. But in order for that to take place, you must take the man as though you do a computer. We have a thing in our program called the Thinking Man Bootcamp. We can make them sit here in three months and we refocus, we train the man like you redo a computer. Because we have to change their way of thinking. We have to show them that there is a better way. Not the way you was brought up. Because the most, most of us that brought up in this situation, you gonna end up, I'm tired of looking up and seeing a brother one day and it makes me not see him on the news. I'm tired of waking up from last night dealing with him and then the next morning, already he just got killed. We could never solve the problem as a split person. We have to come together in unity and that's what we also teach is unity. Nothing can't be done if it's not done in community. We need you guys to come from behind those seats. Come out to our community and see some of the struggles we going through, see some of the things that you have to personally see to change. Change come by, even Jesus had to come down and witness, seeing to understand how to stop it. We have to come down to our level to bring us up to y'all level and that's getting along and stopping crime. We, Making a Better Way and we working with Crime Prevention, we just come out of meeting to come down here, but we structuring, we gonna eliminate the gang squad because we not gonna need it. But we gonna have support, like Brother Willie was saying. There's no support. I tried to get funds, I was denied, I, the mayor, went to her three times. I even put in three applications and I still never got to see her. She wants me to see somebody else. I didn't need an application to see the somebody else. I needed an application to see the mayor. So what I'm saying, that's showing us that we don't mean nothing to nobody, but we do mean something to ourselves. We mean something to our communities and we should mean something to y'all. So I'm asking y'all to get with us and help us with the tools that we don't have to make a difference. And so that's what I'm asking y'all. I'm asking y'all to come out of y'all seat and come into the communities that y'all talking about and be a part of the community and not a part of a tear. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask you, just for the purposes of the meeting that we don't have applause one way or the other for testifiers or opponents. Next proponent, please.
Hi, my name is Houston McHale III. I'm the president of North Omaha Contractors Alliance located on 2505 North 24th Street, Suite 409A, Omaha, Nebraska 68110. And this ordinance number forty-five, it seemed like one of the closest things that I've seen out of, I've been doing this now for about five years into training North Omaha people. Ex-felons, single family mothers and whoever else, homeless or whatnot. And so it looked like this is a step in that direction. And out of the training, out of the two-hundred-and-fifty people that we trained so far, only like thirty of them are still working to this day because the contractors are not, it ain't no revolving loan door. Like for right now, I got a contract that I could put six people to work tomorrow, get them off the street for probably ninety days, but I can't even get the money to start the project. Man, was, now, I done went through all the paperwork, all the certifications, all the insurances, but now I can't even get the money to start the project. So I just hope we come up with some kind of solution starting out of this amendment today, this ordinance right here. And I hope it take us further, longer. So just, thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
Anthony Brown, 3307 or 16th Street. First of all, thank you guys for just being here. I appreciate you guys getting up, leaving your families to come here and do a hard job. You have a lot of things on your agenda, a lot of things on your plate. And I'm just grateful that your kids might not have to experience some of the things that you've heard today. And I continue to pray that they don't. And for those that are in the opponent's side, I hope that today we can find some resolution to that. I'm also with Making a Better Way. I've been installed as the chief operations officer. And it's my responsibility to merge, I came out with, out of prison, 2011, April 19th, with hopes and visions of sparking off Omaha Hip-Hop Crime Prevention Group. And it's been a lot of process, you know? Organization is not very easily attained. Differences of opinions have to be ironed out. I had my own personal growth to deal with. I am not the perfect guy on the block, okay? Yet, through just you guys' time and diligence, whatever district, through the loss, through us all as a community, just doing what we do, pulling together, I was able to find my way down to the Omaha Small Business Network. That was the first draw that established me. And as I got there, I realized that a long time ago, I had disqualified myself from that process. And I didn't stop there and blame nobody. It was me. So after time of taking, you know, Ms. Julia Parker, she took time to counsel with me and she introduced me to North Omaha Contractors Alliance. And I said, hey, is there anything that I can do? Because now it's not about preventing the crime with everybody else, it's about preventing my own crime. I got to talk with Mr. McHale and after some time, I got introduced to Mr. Johnson. And then this is where we're at. And while I was behind that wall, Mr. Hamilton was one of the men that would come behind the wall, stretch out his hand on behalf of everybody in the community to say that if you guys come out with solutions on your mind and not problems, not blaming the police, not blaming the opponent, not saying I didn't like the proponent because he didn't speak the way I want him to speak, solution minded. And that solution today, I'm at a loss for words because there's a lot of, there's a lot of passion in the room right now, there's a lot of tension. And I thank God that right now, that's okay to say on air, that is kind of cooling off a little bit. Because if it's cool here, then it'll be cool out there. You guys are our leaders, whether we got the opportunity to vote for you or not. You're our first leader. The mayor's our second. And then as it goes on, sorry if I'm out of order. Yet, we still can't find a way to get through on this one agenda today, I know. I know there's not gonna be favorable outcomes for some people. But I'm looking forward to the next time that the agenda comes up and we can make it right on that one. And if not that one, then on the next one. So hopefully we haven't left a bad taste in your guys' mouth today. Hopefully you guys can go carry on your day feeling all right and see you guys later. Thank you for serving.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Willie Barney, 12333 Cummings Street and also president facilitator of the Empowerment Network, 105 North 31st Avenue. I hope we all sense the significance of what's happening today. I don't think any of us fully understood until you've heard some of the previous speakers. And it really takes me aback. We all know the statistics. We've seen the reports. If you need more of them, we got twenty-four pages full of statistics. But at the end of the day, we talk about it all the time, but Omaha has Fortune 500 companies, it has Warren Buffett, on down the list. When Omaha wants to do something, it gets it done. If it was a CenturyLink, Omaha figured out how to get it done. If it was a baseball stadium for a hundred and forty million dollars, Omaha figured out how to get it done. If it was building a three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar destination midtown with private money, but if it was building a cancer center with public and private money, we have been able to get it done. Many of you sitting here and even in the back, we have worked collectively on housing development, summer employment and other initiatives. You may not be aware of it, but eight years ago, on April 27th, it'll be our eighth anniversary of forming the Empowerment Network. We have been at this now eight solid years and some of the folks behind me and some of you have been at it twenty, thirty, forty years. What's standing before you today is an opportunity to really make an intentional, focused effort on the biggest gap yet remaining in Omaha. That is the unemployment gap. Just last week, the state of Nebraska was recognized nationally as the lowest unemployment rate in the entire nation. Two-point-eight percent unemployment rate. It's almost unbelievable. Yet, the most recent report that we have, if you look at the data, if we need data, there's twenty-two percent of people in certain census tracts in Omaha that are unemployed. North Omaha, South Omaha, our key pivotal points. We cannot have a great city when certain portions of our city continue to suffer with too much gun violence, lack of access to health, most specifically, employment, underemployment and poverty and all the other things that have been said today. You stand as a city council. I've seen you stand in these positions before and you've made a decision that at times may be unpopular, but you know it's the right thing to do. This is a first step. I wouldn't say a first step, it's a continuing step. Because we have made progress collectively over the last eight years and even ten years and fifteen years. There are some positive things that are happening in our community. But this gap of unemployment, underemployment and poverty has to be dealt with head-on and you have the opportunity as a city council, as well as the mayor's office and the others, to really have a measurable, tangible impact. And I'm just sitting here, just listening to the other comments, the unity that, from different voices, different places in our community that's saying, this is the time to do this. You have the ability to help us fix this. You have the ability as a city council. Councilman Jerem, thank you for bringing this forward. Councilman Festerson, Gray and the others, at various times, we've all talked about transformation. And I believe today is one of those pivotal moments where you can make a very specific, intentional, lead by example. Show the business community, show the philanthropic community, show everyone that the city council is willing to step up at a level, never, just at a level on the intentional side with this job training. Because we have shown with your support with the summer employment, when we have put people to work, as was said by a number of the other speakers, the gun violence rate in North Omaha during the summer months when we have jobs is down sixty-two percent when the young men and women are working. Sixty-two percent. The goal has been then, if we can do that collectively during the summer, how do we stretch that out through the rest of the year? And I believe this ordinance is a step in that direction. I don't think it goes far enough. And I know Councilman Jerem knows that. It doesn't go quite far enough because we believe we need a year-round employment program that would allow our young men and women and others that have been disenfranchised, whether they're coming out of prison or if they're just trying to get moving in the right direction for the first time in their life. This ordinance allows us an opportunity to really put a stake in the ground and say that we as Omaha, the city of Omaha, the state of Nebraska, with a two-point-eight percent unemployment rate, it is fully unacceptable for us to have zip codes and census tracts where it's twenty-two percent unemployment. This ordinance gets us down that path. And I believe with us working collectively, we have people here that we disagreed on different things, we have different approaches. But hopefully you can hear very clear through all of this, that in this particular instance, we are united. It is a clear message. This is the best opportunity that Omaha will have to move the dial so that we can lead by example and have other cities looking at us, not only because we host the NCAAs, not only because we host the swim trials, not only because we are a great city to go to the old market, but what if it's a great city that we can have employment at 24th and Lake? What if it's a great city that you go down to South 24th Street and not only great food, but businesses are thriving? That's what we're talking. That's what we're talking about. This essence, this ordinance goes a long way to pushing us down the street, and then we can work collectively to take it the rest of the way. This is an opportunity for the city council to stand up and show by example and lead by example that it's time for us to make the move. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Other proponents today.
Elijah Ali, twenty-nine twelve North Twenty-Sixth Street. I waited till last because I'm kind of betwitched. I'm an opponent, because it's, as it been heard, it's past the time, it's life-threatening. And I'm an opponent because I'm a realist. As you've seen, and this is probably the first time, particularly as it applies to a situation, is this, that you receive dialogue from a variance of our community, and the sincerity of each one is very clear and obvious, and the unification is brought about because the situation in our community is very clear and very obvious. This piece that we're talking about is miniscule. I've been in the communication business for over forty-some years, all the way back to the Model Cities Proposal, sixty-nine, your first commitment, all the way through riverfront developments and horizons and all the other kinds of things that have been identified as things that will aid the North Omaha community, used to be African-American community, through community block grant funds, which have been spent everywhere else but there. We've experienced a situation with the sewer situation coming in, of which it's very obvious, just by looking at the number of workers out there, the only thing you need are big machines to dig holes. You don't need anything else, that's all you got out there right now. I've been in front of the city council on many occasions, prior to about the enterprise zone period of time. The enterprise zone, to me, was the coup de grace. That was the last piece. That was the last major federal mandate that identified a Pacific area, Pacific zip codes, pinpointed money to come in. Omaha was the only one in the whole plan that sent in a proposal pre-existing. In other words, the people who identified inside of the proposal who would work it out, and it still did not spend a half of the money that it was supposed to because of the pre-existing plan that has already been laid down. And that pre-existing plan has not altered. In every major plan you look at, you have downtown Omaha going all the way to Ames Streets. That's the plan. All of a mess about Sixteenth Street. You have not changed your plan since the original Model Cities Proposal. So what I really want you to understand is that this group is unified, because it's the last go-around. And it may be the last go-around for you, and it may be the last go-around for us, or it could be the last go-around for all of us. And this little piece right here is miniscule.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, we'll move to opponents.
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Kagan, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our group opposes the proposed Jerem ordinance for several reasons. We do not favor the city using taxpayer dollars to offer preferential subsidies to companies that hire and train a particular classification of prospective employees, as this discriminates against the internal hiring practices of private companies. It also imposes reverse discrimination against other prospective employees seeking to work on city projects. We also oppose offering a pilot program that uses thirty thousand dollars per month in taxpayer dollars to train prospective workers at the expense of existing facilities. Moreover, this discriminatory proposal probably would face legal challenges that could delay and nullify its implementation. As an alternative, we favor the mayoral plan to solicit proposals from private companies that bid on city projects to accomplish the same employment and small business participation objectives. We feel that the Stothard administration already has embarked on an excellent plan that will decrease unemployment, poverty, and crime in depressed Omaha neighborhoods, lifting people off welfare. The administration draft document clearly demonstrates city intent to work closely with workforce development groups, a contracting work group, general contractors, the Chamber of Commerce, and state universities, also specific intentions for youth outreach. Therefore, we urge city councils to vote no on the Jerem proposal, and instead support the mayor's initiative to encourage and develop diversity in city employment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents.
Mary Jane Trumper, fifty-three oh six Isard Street. I'm like the man that was up here before. I'm kind of betwixt and between. I'm up here as an opponent to this particular ordinance. I appreciate the conversation being started, though. I just didn't like your point, and I...but I do think that what Mr. Willie Hamilton had said was true. We can hopefully all agree that there's a problem, and I'm definitely here to say, I believe there's a problem, and we may just diverge on the solution. And I can't disagree with much of what was said at all up here today. It was like they were talking to the choir. I guess my thing about the proposal that Mr. Jerem had, and like a jobs-type proposal, I feel like the best thing that you can do with whatever money is thrown at this problem is to leverage it the best that you can, and how to do that. And I see the young man from Mo-Holland, and I see Mr. McHale that talked about the contractors, and I see the barriers that are out there for small business. The only thing that has ever transformed a community is small business. That is the only method I know in history where people have been able to rise up out of their station in life and do better. And you leverage, because you see Mo-Holland, he's got a business, he's got an idea, he's got the drive, and he's going to put other people to work. So that will leverage, giving him what he needs will leverage for other people, the same with Mr. McHale with his saying he didn't have the cash flow for contracting jobs. He wants to put other people to work. We're talking about with the plan with workforce solutions, there was talk about how are we going to identify the people to put through the program and all of these things. Well, we can't. You have to have the people that are out in the community, that know their community, that know the men or women that are out there, and they're the ones that need to pick and choose who are going to be working for those small businesses. So I'm here really just to say that when we're looking at solutions, that we focus on leveraging our dollars, getting the best benefit-to-cost ratio, and maybe focusing more on the small business element of it, rather than just a jobs-training program, because thirty people working would not have the same impact as removing the barriers for identifying, or would love to have like thirty of Mr. Mo-Hollins out there, that thirty guys like that, that we could mentor and remove the barriers, give them the tools that they need to start up their small businesses. That would transform, in my opinion, a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, low-close public hearing. We have some lights on. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just have, real quick, Minister Charles Johnson, for a quick moment. Is Charles still here?
Yes.
Could you just say your name again?
Charles, Mr. Charles Johnson.
Reverend Johnson, thank you for the challenge you made to us to get involved, to come down and see it for ourselves, not just view it from the television, but to see it. I do do it, but I need to do it more, and I want to start by asking, do you have a church, sir?
We're looking, trying to get the Farnhill, the Florence Towers, there's that Florence church that used to sit there. We went into the other day, it's empty, it needs a lot of work, but we will, and we're trying to get, we was going to get with Mr. Gray. We have previously talked to him about that, and he agreed to try to help us as he can. But that's the idea of church we're trying to put together right now.
The next time that you speak, that you're delivering, I'd like an invitation to come and hear you.
Thank you.
And then also, I'd like to just go out to lunch, and then you and I talk. Now, when we talk, we're going to both have to listen to each other.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to have to listen to you, you're going to have to listen to me. And I want to say that I came from those streets. I was a product of tech high school when we were all throwaways. They told us we were going to end up being nobodies, nothings.
I understand.
Well, I ended up being something.
That's right.
But there was a formula that I used, and so, as you're challenging me, I have to challenge you about that formula. It's like this coin, it's got a head and a tail. And if you just do the head, you'll fail. If you just do the tail, you'll fail. But if you combine both, you'll succeed. So I'd like for us to just talk about that.
All right.
So just email me the next time you're going to speak, and I'd like to be there to hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. And then I'd like to call Brandon Thomas up, if Brandon is still here. You have to say your name again.
Brandon Thomas.
First of all, I want to say thank you for being a hero. I don't know if anybody's ever called you that before.
Yeah, yeah.
But I want to call you a hero, because you're taking people who are supposed to be throwaway people, you're putting your arms around them, and then you're saying, I want to help you get out of that hole. And so, thank you for that. And do you ever make yourself available for, like, speaking to a class? Would you be available for something like that?
Yeah, I talked to Willie about putting together a program. I got a few game members I've been working with, and I think they'd be good mentors, because they was good mentors for me.
Mm-hmm. It would be nice if I could get you and maybe two or three of your best guys to come to UNO sometimes and talk to people who want to be future teachers. These are teachers that have no idea how to deal with inner-city kids, but if they hear it directly from you, it might help my case in helping them get ready for that. So if you don't mind, I'd like, if you could email me with your address and number of how to get in touch with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if I could talk to Anthony Brown, if Anthony is still here. Anthony Brown? Anthony, I called Brandon a hero, but I'm going to call you a miracle. You're a miracle, much like the way that Malcolm X was. Malcolm X didn't have a chance, a snowball's chance in hell, and yet he fought all of that negativity that happened to him and his family, turned himself around a hundred and eighty degrees, and he became one of the best Americans that, you know, we have as a representative. I think you're on that path, and the thing that I like the best that you said is that you didn't blame anybody else. You took the blame for what you did, and you knew that if you had made different decisions that maybe you wouldn't gotten sidetracked so well. And I appreciate that, and I just want to say, too, that if you ever want to speak to my class, you're willing to, but I'm offering it to you. But the thing that I want to really say to you is that, there was said earlier that the leadership in North Omaha, or all of Omaha, was not what it should be. It seems to me that you need to be groomed to be one of the future leaders. I see in you, and I'm not prophesying or anything, but I see in you the type of person that needs to be, you need to run for office someday. So if you need somebody to help get you ready for that, I'm here to help you get ready for that. But don't let your limit just stay to where it's at. The sky's the limit for you, just like Malcolm, and if you heed the call, you could do a great deal for the community. I just wanted to say that to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, before I give up the floor, I want to say that I appreciated Mary Jane's comment about not necess...she understood that there is a problem. So some of the constituents in my district will say there isn't a problem, or if there is a problem, it's their fault. But I didn't hear Mary Jane say that. I heard her say, let's take a look at what are the benefit-to-cost ratio type of things? Are we spending our money the right way? So I'm hoping that in the next couple of months or so, that what we concentrate on is not fighting on if we're going to do something, let's go ahead and do something, but let's do the right thing, and let's do the thing where we can get the most benefit for our money. Now, the reason why I'm saying that is because it takes two sides to make a problem. Usually when you have a problem, like for example, when I did marriage counseling, very rarely was it just a male or the female's fault, it was both. And the same with this problem, there's issues on both sides, there are mistakes being made on both sides. So what we're going to have to do is try to do the best we can. I say it starts with forgiveness, then it moves to a fresh start, and then, like they said today, we need a new commitment. But that new commitment cannot be built upon former mistakes, because then you'll just end up throwing money down a dark hole. So yes, we have to do something. Yes, it is our responsibility to get it done. Yes, I probably am one of the top ten people in the state that need to be involved in getting it done, I know that. But when we go and we get this thing done, it's very, very important that we don't repeat mistakes that we've been making for decades. We have to reinvent ourselves and find a new way to avoid some of the old mistakes, so that then our kids can have a brighter future. So I am invested, but I'm also invested in making sure that both sides see some new realities, not just the council, although the council does have to see some new realities, but also the community has to see some realities. And one reality, and I'm going to say this, and I'm not going to be popular, but one reality, and my mother, my grandmother and my mother taught it to me, they said, Franklin, if you're going to ever make it, you're going to have to do twice as good as the white man did, just to make it. Now, that statement right there is not going to make me popular, but I'm not wrong. So I guess what I'm saying is, there are some realities that aren't fair, and there are some things that we're going to have to let go of. I was called a sellout just because I got straight A's. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. And that did not come from Africa, that came from Jim Crow.
Yes.
Okay? So what we need to do is really zero in on our children. Let's build a community for our children, and that means some old things are going to have to fall away, whether they be conservative things that have to fall away, or liberal things that are going to have to fall away. We have to reinvent ourselves for the sake of our children. So I am invested, but my investment is making sure that, just like it was said with Mary Jane, that the benefit-to-cost ratio is the max, that we can maximize it the best we can, so that we get the most out of the expenditures of our money. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. I spent thirty-five years as a television journalist. I spent thirty of those years doing a television show that challenged the powers that be to address the concerns of the North Omaha community. I can't tell you how many times, including my going on six years on the city council, that I have heard, we got a problem. We all recognize, we got a problem. I've been hearing, we got a problem for forty-two years now. At some point in time, I would think that we would have done something to fix it if we really want to solve it, but I'm not convinced that we do. I created the North Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, for those who may have forgotten. I commend my council colleague to my left for putting together this ordinance, but I'm not convinced that we're going to get anything from it without some serious action. Speaking of the contractors specifically, we had, I had began working with the program management team for the sewer separation project, because I felt like we oughta have some, we oughta have, uh, a handle on at least that two-and-a-half-billion-dollar, twenty-seven-year project. Let me remind you all of something, a promise that was made, because we're sitting here talking about promises that were made. Twenty years ago, maybe fifteen, Omaha was the largest superfund site in the country. When the EPA and various city and state officials came in, one of the things they promised was that there were going to be people who looked like the community, working on these projects, and that we were going to build a couple, a couple of companies out of that. It's been fifteen years. How many companies have we created? Not one. Not one. And we continue to talk about, "There's a problem." Forty-two years I've been hearing that nonsense. "We got a problem." Last year, towards the end of last year, my, my, my council, my, my colleague to my left, who has been involved in this intimately, along with several other of my colleagues here, asked the program management team, now, let me remind you all, this sewer separation project is not the only one going on in the country. Okay? There are about eighty, ninety cities where all of this is going on. And it's mandated by the federal government, so it's guaranteed money for certain companies that know how to do this work. Guaranteed money. Over the course of the last five years, the management team from, that has been operating in the city of Omaha have taken nearly sixty million dollars out of this community. Sixty million. When I started asking them about some participation in making sure that contractors got work, I was very specific about what I wanted to see happen, or what I thought should occur for the contractors. Oh, and by the way, let me add, uh, that, um, this, all of these, this ordinance, this Small Emerging Business Ordinance, all of them are race-neutral. There's nothing discriminatory about either of them, despite what you have heard here today. There's nothing discriminatory about them. But I, when I began to talk to them, I said, "Look, take, hire two individuals, just two people, and have two consulting companies work with these two individuals that we will hire. One will be involved at the, at the, at the planning stages, or the, the, the stage where we start to look at what this, what a various project of a CSO program is going to look like in certain areas." So that at that opportunity, and that's where the jo-- that's where, um, people decide who's going to do what at the design phase. So, at the design phase, I asked that there be one person at the design phase to break down some of these contracts. Course, we don't have people that can do the digging the trenches and so forth, but we have people who do flatwork, we have people that do landscaping, we have people that do a number of other things that are part of these projects that can be broken down into specific jobs. That's what I asked for. And I asked for another individual that would mine colleges and universities and other entities like Goodwill and others to mine for individuals that are good workers who will be, who can learn the, the skilled trades. Two people I asked for. And I didn't ask for the taxpayers to pay for it. I asked for the people who are making significant sums of money in this community to spend less than one percent to hire two people. Now, I've not talked to these people in a while, 'cause quite frankly, I'm ticked off with 'em, because it has flipped now. See, in December, we were supposed to have had a deal, but they had to check with upstairs first. And now, we're doing RFQs and all kinds of other things that will drag this out for at least another year. I am not optimistic that this is going to happen without some significant confrontation. I'm just gonna be honest with you. Because we've been sitting back, this, several of us on this council have been back here trying like crazy. You know, when we did the Small Emerging Business Ordinance, when we did the contracts and all the other things that I was sitting in on, not a single administrative person asked me what I thought, or asked me what the legislative intent was of any of this. None of this. We are united, but we may have to be united in another way, because I'm not convinced that this city is listening. For forty-two years, I've heard, "We got a problem." At what point do we say to ourselves that it's time to stop talking about, "We got a problem," and start fixing what the problem is? Now, some of us have been back here trying to fix the problem. And yeah, what y'all see is anger from me, because I'm frustrated, and I'm tired of us coming up with solutions just to allow them to get caught in political dog foolishness. I understand what needs to occur. One of the first things I did when I became a council member was create the North Omaha Neighborhood, uh, North Omaha Contractors Alliance, was to set up a Small Emerging Business Ordinance that was race-neutral, that affected certain census tracks, tracks to make sure that people got work. Right now, I'm not sure where we are with the contractors. We're doing RFPs and RFQs for things we don't need to do it for. We have capable people that can do the work. One company specifically, when I asked the administration to refute their numbers, that talked about their success rate and the amount of money they were saving for the city, nobody could refute those numbers. Yet, we're still going through this foolishness. I am hopeful, Councilmember Jerem, but I am not optimistic.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I see we have one more light on, Councilman Jerem, but before we, um, go to him, I wanna have a few comments as well. Um, and I wanna thank all of you for being here. I appreciate your attendance here and I appreciate all your testimonies today, and I agree with most everything I heard as well. I think Mr. Barney's statistics are telling and totally unacceptable, two percent unemployment in our state, but twenty-two percent unemployment in North Omaha and South Omaha? We need to re-- we all need to realize, we, we all need to realize, this is one of our community's biggest challenges and something we need to get more proactive about. And I think that's the frustration you're hearing today, uh, from several of us, and I know several of you, uh, that we haven't seen that yet. So, I commend also Councilman Jerem for putting this on the table as a proposal that's specific and drives this conversation. What comes out of this may or may not resemble this exact ordinance. It may more resemble a pilot project he's also working on to get to this issue. It may more resemble, uh, the Empowerment Network's efforts with the Step Up Program, or taking a program like that year-round for adults as well, and expanding that program. It may resemble something I talked about at lunchtime today at the Goodwill, the youth build program there is very successful. Uh, also, coincidentally, we talked to a, a participant whose name was Brandon, and a very similar story to some of the testimony we heard today about growing up without parents. He raised his two younger brothers, got them through school successfully. Now, he's in this program, it's his turn to get his GED, become a role model, and his dream is to become involved in the culinary world. And I have all the confidence in the world he's gonna do that. But they have twice as many applicants as they can serve in this program, but have the success we're looking for, have the measurement we're looking for, and it's the exact same thing we're talking about with all these other opportunities here today and the ones that I mentioned. And maybe it's a combination of all those things. Um, so I'm pleased to hear all of us say, "It's not if, it's how and when, and I think that time is now." With that, Councilman Jerem.
Thank you. I must say, I did not expect the, um, number of speakers that came here today, but I doubt that many in the room were not moved to the core by what they heard. And I certainly believe that, and what many people said also cannot be disputed, that we're, we're long on words and talking in this city, but our record is short on action. And for those of you who came and, and made that point today, uh, I heard you. And I hope that the directors that are behind me, who are involved in this, heard you. And I know that in the third floor in the mayor's office, they listen to our meetings and hopefully they heard you. Because for anything to come out of this process, and whatever course that it addresses, whether it be youth, whether it be adult workers, or whether it be contractors, or some combination, for what it is we decide to do to work, or have any chance or semblance of a chance of succeeding, it has to be something that's supported, not just here by four or more of us, but it has to be supported by the mayor's office. And so, I share with you that this is not something that's easy to do. And when you put an idea out there, it seems that the trend in, in today's political world is for everyone to tell you just how wrong you are. And that's okay. I've got plenty of, of cushion below my skin that's pretty thick to, to buffer that thing. So, I put the ideas out there to get this off a high center, so we can move towards actually implementing a program and, and seeing if we can take a meaningful step at reducing unemployment and poverty in the most troubled sections of our city. And, and someone said to me recently, "Well, Jerem, nobody's really had any luck since Lyndon Johnson started this whole war on poverty. What makes you think what you guys are doing will be any different? This is just another government program." And I think to some extent, not speaking for Mr. Kagan, there are a number of people in the community that have a fair level of skepticism and cynicism as to whether we can produce something that'll actually work. And there's no shortage of barriers to actually accomplishing something on, on our end either. And I don't know if I brought it with me. Yes, I did. There's no shortage of legal memos to tell me the legal complexities of trying to do something. So, those have to be sorted through. So, we have skeptics, we have legal barriers, and we have a community of interest that, if not large enough, will prevent us from succeeding in whatever form. But that doesn't mean that I'm not committed to the effort and that I won't see this through. Because you couldn't hear what you heard here today and not double down on your commitment to do something. At least, that's the case for me. I am more committed to this than, than ever. And, and people who doubt me will, will, I think, regret that they have, especially when we have projects coming down the line in my district, approaching a hundred million dollars, that have my attention. And if we have to hold up a project to gain the attention of the people who are in positions of making the power, then so be it. But there's only so much talk, and so much conversation, and so much dialogue before you say to yourself, "For the amount of money that we're asking for, to try something, what in the world is preventing three simple letters that form one simple word to say 'yes' from coming out of your mouth?" You know, the pilot project of high three hundreds to four hundred thousand, I, I forget, I think it was Ali who said, "This is pennies," or something like that. Minuscule. He's right. We spend, now, we're going over a hundred and thirty million dollars a year on our police Four hundred thousand pilot project. That is minuscule. We spend, from a variety of funding sources, a half a million on the summer Step Up Program. That is minuscule. We have federal Workforce Investment Act funds in the era of sequestration that allows the Heartland Workforce Solutions and its contractors to serve a little over four hundred youth and adults. And the city invests forty thousand on top of that. That is minuscule. Updated numbers through today from our city's finance director is, currently projected, again this year, to have a budget surplus. Number today, approximately thirteen million dollars. The numbers proposed are minuscule, and yet, the resistance is monumental. Is this the perfect solution? No. Where did the pilot project come from? You can call it the Jerem proposal, but I went out and asked the experts. The experts at Heartland Workforce Solutions, who work in this every day with their contractors, say, "If you're dealing with unemployed people, the adult workforce, and you're dealing with youth, they have access to programming, but they don't have access to programming that addresses the barriers that prevent them from gaining employment or keeping it." So, we can talk and talk and talk, and we can keep spending more and more and more on policing. We can spend more and more and more on Medicaid. We can spend more and more on SNAP, and we can see more and more people in prayer vigils after yet another murder. We had a young boy running back yesterday clinging for his life, shot down in the street. You know, this is the week of, of, uh, in the Christian world, called Holy Week. And so, we hear a lot about, uh, in the Christian faith, the New Testament and the Beatitudes and ministering to the poor and people who are in prison. There's a lot of praying going on, and people on this council, I know pray, and many of you in this room do, and there are ministers here among us. And I don't know what your prayers are, where they're leading you, but mine keep telling me to do something. And so, this ordinance, in whatever form, needs to happen, whether it's in a pilot project that it morphs into, or the hammer of the force of law in a compelled program, it'll be up to what happens when my patience expire, because your patience have expired.
Absolutely.
I'm not quite there yet. There's, there's serious conversation going on, and I hope that it, it leads somewhere. But at some point... But at some point, it's time to make a decision. And I would hope that the people here, and I forget the day in January where every single person on this council spoke about wanting to do something to address the unemployment and poverty in this city. I think it was around January 15th. Here we are now. Tomorrow's April Fool's Day. What are we gonna do? Because the criticism I heard here today of not doing enough, or doing too little, or unmet promises from decades, in many respects, they're spot-on. And if you don't, if you don't feel like you need to do something about it, and your reasoning is that it's a government-led program, I just ask you to think about this. You can pay a little bit of money on the front end, or you can pay a whole lot on the back end, which is what we're doing here today. And so, I hope and pray that we'll have an answer soon, and a decision on what direction this goes, as I work with the mayor to try to get a program that will have a meaningful impact, or at least show a path through a pilot, to prove to the skeptics what works. And we'll have to see what the mayor's office does with that proposal, but literally, the ball is now in her court.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
I just wanted to say that I agree with Mary Jane. No one's sitting here saying that we don't have a problem. I guess when I heard about the pilot program, I looked at it and said, 30 people, that's not enough. That's not going to solve the problem. I think we need to look bigger, and I think that there are a number of organizations out there that are doing it right. And if we're talking about funding, I think public-private partnerships are also a great way to go, because we might be able to maximize the number of people we help. 30's not enough. Helping 30 people in the next year is not enough. I agree, we can't sit and talk about it anymore, although it would be helpful if all seven of us talked, because just because you have four votes and might be able to pass something, it would be helpful if the seven of us talked. I talk to Mr. Gray frequently, but if there's going to be an ordinance or a pilot program, my doors open. I answer the phone. I think we should all sit down and talk about this. And that's what I'm hearing from those of you out there. I think Mr. Love said, "I want to be part of the solution. I want to be brought in." I know Mr. Barney is always talking and reaching out, and you've always reached out to all of us here. Do a wonderful job. And attending the Saturday mornings with the Empowerment Network is, you do an amazing job. We need to know what's going on. You go through the past, what's worked, and what we need to do in the future. And we need to continue to do that. I have to say, I was extremely impressed with Mr. Anthony Brown, and what you've done, Mr. Brown. I don't know if he's still here. But I was very impressed, and I wish you well. And please keep in contact with all of us here on council. Like Councilman Thompson, I do think that you already are a leader. You're doing it now. You're doing it along with the Mulholland, look, I lost my notes. Brandon Thomas, sorry. Thank you. Thank you both. You are our future, and I'm so impressed. Both of you, young entrepreneurs, and you're giving it your all. And then, you're reaching out, and not only are you helping yourselves, but you're helping others along the way. I can't tell you how impressed I am with that. So, if we could build on that, so in a pilot program, let's look at what their barriers are, and let's find out how we can really help in reducing those barriers, not just helping 30 people that we're gonna go find somewhere. We've got them right here. So, I think we need to expand it, and I think that there are programs out there that are able to help people, I guess, at a cost of, when you're looking at 400,000 for 30 people, 400,000 doesn't scare me. Because you're right, Councilman Jerem. In comparison to what we're spending on crime prevention, and in federal aid, and everything else, we will save money by spending money to help people help themselves. And that is absolutely, absolutely right. So, I don't think there's anyone here in this council, nor do I think that the third floor disagrees with that, or any of the directors sitting behind me here. But I think what we need to do is come up with a way to maximize how we help a large number of people. Because if we're talking about 22% unemployment, getting 100 people jobs is barely gonna tackle that. I understand that it's a start, but I don't want to just do something like that and say, "Well, now we've done something." Well, and then maybe 15 of those 30 will actually still have the jobs a couple of years from now. We need to maximize how we help people help themselves, just like Mr. Thomas. And it sounds to me like there's funding issues, there's some other barriers maybe from your past that you need to get past. You know what? I think the people of Omaha are willing to get past that. I think that we are a very forgiving and very giving community all over Omaha. And we talk about, maybe those of us who live out in West Omaha don't know what's going on in North Omaha or South Omaha. Actually, we do, and a number of people in my district do. And what we need is, we need to bring them together, because they're willing to help. I've talked to the heads of a number of corporations. They're willing to hire the people, they're willing to pay for the training of the people, they're willing to mentor people. And some of them are the very contractors that are doing these CSO projects. I've met with them, I've reached out. Their doors open. And I know that the mayor's talked to them, too. So, what we need to do, get them together with the people, I mean, Brandon, make sure I have your name and number before you leave. But that's what we need, is somebody to bring them together. And I don't know that the seven of us can be doing that on a daily basis, because I do think that's a full-time job. Hiring somebody to do that, hiring a couple people, I agree. I think we're on the right track, but I don't think that, over the next couple of weeks, we should necessarily focus on a pilot program that helps 30 people. Because I do think that, let's take an amount of money. Let's come up with the mayor, who's doing your budget now, how can we maximize what we're gonna spend that money on? And you also have got to remember, you may have some surplus now, but we also have to think about, we have a fiduciary duty to taxpayers, all of which you are here today. Because we also have to be mindful that we don't increase necessarily the cost of the CSO, because we're gonna pay for that, you're gonna pay for that, you're gonna see an increase on your mud bill as well, right? I mean, we also don't want to hurt the very people we're trying to help by increasing those fees that are felt by all, I mean, on our utilities. So, I think we can do this, and I agree, we need to do it now. I agree. Not tomorrow, not wait until the end of summer. I get it, Councilman Gray, I really do. And you know I do. And I'm willing to take action. I know the people in my district care. And, you know, Mary Jane, Mary Jane said it, I don't think that there's anybody that really, truly doesn't feel the same way that Mary Jane Trumper feels. No one can say we don't have a problem, but what are those solutions? And I do think there are some, but we've got to help more people than that. So, Councilman Jerem, I want to thank you for putting something on the agenda that, I'm not gonna go into the details of that, because you told me that it's gonna change, so not even gonna address. But I understand what you want to do, is get the discussion going, and put something on the agenda where we talk about it. So, I think that the discussion today was very good, and I hope that it's reported, and so that the people in our community, other than just us here in this room, hear it. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Ginnan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stube, am I correct in saying that the CSO boundaries go from basically the Washington County line to the Sarpy County line, 72nd Street to the river? That fairly accurate?
Bob Stube, Public Works, that's relatively close, yes.
Okay. So, it was pleasing to hear words today, and I was hesitant to push my button, because it's more words. But allow me, you had your chance, I'd like to have mine. It was pleasing to hear our friends and neighbors from North Omaha say that the city limits doesn't stop at Cummings Street.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Jerem, you have the patience of Job. But I will be with you when it runs out, if we don't have actions. Because what I have heard here today is that our constituents, our citizens, our friends, our neighbors are telling the city to get off their assets and start doing something. I think the word, the message, has not been just heard, it has been listened to, and you've received an engagement from this side of the podium, as it was alluded to earlier, so eloquently by Mr. Love, that it's time, I don't know about Mr. Gray, in 41 years, 42 years. Excuse that horrible error. But you covered it, I worked it. You had a camera, I had a blue uniform, and I saw what was happening out there. And there were times when there was improvement. And it's been peaks and valleys, but I think it's our job right now to make sure that we have more peaks than we do have valleys.
Yes, sir.
And if this pilot program, I mean, to me, yeah, pilot programs start out small. I proposed one 13 years ago. I'm still trying to get it today. I was this close by the end, two years ago, in 3-1-1. And it took a lot of components to put that together. Mr. Jerem said it best, this thing has a lot of moving parts to it, and there's gotta be a lot of discussion. And today was part of that process. I heard you loud and clear, I listened. So, do we not let a pilot program proceed? I think we need to have that opportunity continue forward. If we can change the spokes in the wheel while it's moving, I think we're answering part of the community's question. You're doing something. You're seeing something, you're getting your arms around something that the eastern part of Omaha can see. A $2 billion project, that's going from the boundaries that I just got confirmed from the Public Works, that we're having programs, and maybe even a better one, to get those adults that are facing life's challenges employed and working with the shovel instead of with the knife or a gun, for one. Or peddling illegal drugs, or doing the things that are taking us to a level in Part 1 crimes to somewhere where we don't want to go, that our police department, our commit, folks, item 34 that we just passed today is another movement forward, where it was a small amount of money that several, that the entire city came together, put a plan together, worked it with the administration, and got that first step in some funding. We did it today, by passing it unanimously. We can do that with a pilot program, but we have to go through that process, the same thing that item 34 went through. I would hope it doesn't take 42 years. I don't think it will. I might be a little more hopeful than my colleague. But as I said before, when patience runs out, things happen that may not be palatable to government itself. And it may not be palatable to our community, our city. But we don't need to have, that was what I sensed from everything they got here today, that rocks throwing, and the verbal jabs, and the threats that have come out in various forms of communication over the last few months. We continue to do that, working as, and be united. There was a term, two terms, if I may, and I will end with this. Structure, I couldn't agree more. And part of that, pilot programs fit within a structure, and they should be given that fair chance to work. And the other one is, these two gentlemen that I think we're all very proud of out here, is that mentor. Having those folks there to get them past that breaking point, so they see, "Hey, I can turn, I can turn myself around. I can do this," and got a little helping hand. We have a shortage of mentors in getting folks away from doing graffiti. And getting them into something where they can use their talent legally. It's called urban art. And we have a shortage there. If this provides, if a program provides, pilot or full-blown, to me, it doesn't make any difference. And something that produces what folks can actually see and say, "Wow, that's working. We can get our arms around that." Race neutral, that mentioned, I stopped counting after four times that it was said today, because I know that's true. I supported that, and will continue to support that. So, yeah, this German kid listened, heard what you say, what you said, what's going to be said. It might not be a pleasant sight to see a German kid get to a breaking point. But we have to do something. That is a large project, there's a lot of money that, well, for the lack of a better point, have gone underground and out of the city. And I have to, but we do have to give folks credit for, you know, do we have those major companies that can do complete underground work in the city of Omaha? A couple, three maybe. And those are the ones that bid. And those are the ones that bid. And those are the ones that get those big multimillion-dollar jobs. I think we're just, like, you carved out your time to come down here today, we should be able to carve out processes or portions of large contracts for local contractors. So I would end with that. Thank you, Mr. President, and let's move on.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted my colleague, Councilman Grenat, to know that there's only one group that I fear more than German boys, and that's that, I fear the boys from the hood, so. Mr. Barney, if you could come up, please.
Willie Barney?
Willie, you and I have had conversations before about the need for bipartisan solution. And we started that conversation, and then it kind of took a little bit of a lull. The reason why for that lull is that when you're working eighty hours a week, the schedule gets awfully crazy, especially when you have little girls that are making life decisions in their life, and daddy has to be the rescuer. But I will go ahead and resume those conversations with you. But I want to also confess that another reason why there was a lull in that, in that, at the time that we were talking, and then you showed me your plan, and then you showed me the cost, I have to admit that I had sticker shock.
Well, you should.
It knocked me down like a Joe Frazier hook, okay? And so part of our future discussions will have to be about sticker cost and cost-to-benefit ratio types of things. People in my district are not against helping, they're just wondering, is it the best help? Is it the best cost efficiency of that money being spent? So that's going to be a part, a big part of that bipartisan conversation that we're going to have to continue. Now, I noticed that Mr. Hamilton, he said it nice, he says, if you can't give a large number, and you can't give a small number, just say it, and then start, and then take steps. And that really registered with me, because sometimes I think you have to take steps, and at times I think the people are asking the council for large bites. Councilman Jerem is not asking for that at this moment, but ultimately, it could get to be large. But I think, I think for you and I to continue that conversation, we have to think in terms of a stair-step approach as opposed to a leapfrog approach, because that sticker shock, it just won't go over in my district. And then, so, but I do want to end by saying that the entire effort for Omaha has been led by you, and it hasn't gone unnoticed. And I've listened to you many times, both in a public setting and private, and I hear you saying that, yes, the war on poverty started in the sixties, and yes, there have been many failures, and yes, there have been many misuses of monies. But I hear you saying that Omaha, you see Omaha kind of like a city set upon a hill, that we can be the example of how to do it right. Am I accurate in saying that?
There's no question. Omaha is best positioned to do this than any city in the country.
Yes. And so that's what hooks me, is that there is a need, I can't ignore the need, and maybe right here in the center of this great nation is where this new movement should start. And so bless you for that, and as you challenge me and I challenge you, and we learn to learn from each other, I just want to keep encouraging you for having that vision, and thank you for the work you've done.
Thank you, Councilman. May I respond just quickly?
Yes.
I've shared, I think, the numbers with just about anybody that's willing to listen or accept an email. The numbers are that large because of forty to fifty years of neglect, disinvestment. And when we talk to business leaders, leaders of various organizations, elected officials, they all admit that. There's been forty to fifty, not to say that people haven't done things and haven't invested. As a part of the Kerner Report, it talked about a very significant piece. The problem cannot be solved until the solution is at the same scale. Omaha has done pieces here and there, but when you look at the scale of the issue, for some reason, we don't want to see the scale. But to Councilman Jerem's point, currently, we're spending, with the state, city, county combined, over four-point-five billion dollars between prisons and jails and police and the county jail and on down the line. Four-point-five billion dollars. I'm a taxpayer, Pete, too. I would rather my tax dollars be invested on the front end of this, and I'm telling you, over time, stair-step, we're willing, we're willing to come to the table collectively, with the people that are here and others that are not in the room, collectively with you and anyone else, to develop a solution, a bipartisan solution like we've all talked about. It's doable, but we've got to take the step, and we can't be afraid of those numbers. We were not afraid of those numbers when it was three-hundred-and-fifty million dollars to build a CenturyLink. We were not afraid when it was a hundred-and-forty million to build a baseball park. We were not afraid when it was two-hundred, three-hundred million dollars to build a cancer center, and thirty-five million of that is money coming out of the public budget, and then another five million from the county budget. We're not afraid when it's building things. What about building people? Because when those people can do what they need to do, and I'm a big part of, you know what, personal responsibility, what are we willing to do to help ourselves first before we ask anything from anybody else? But when we do our part, then we do expect that the city, just like what you're showing today, the leadership, to take this to a whole new level, because Omaha is that shining example. Whether we want to realize it or not, there are already twenty-plus cities that have come to Omaha to look at what's going on because of the progress that we have made. But we are right at the doorstep, and it is going to take investment, but I agree with you a hundred percent, it needs to be stair-step. When you challenged me, and Councilwoman Amy and others challenged and said, take a step back, look at it, how do we make it more bipartisan? How do we make it to a step? We took that challenge and we backed off. And at the end of the summer, when things didn't happen the way that we expected them to happen, because there were dollars available for us to make a big step then, we didn't do that step. And that very next meeting, if you, the last time I was in front of the council, I was not a happy Willie Barney. I'm a very facilitative, I can work with people across the table, but I challenged the council to say that we need to move forward, and I'm glad, Councilman Jerem and all of you, that have brought us back to this point. We have, Councilman, you know, in Omaha, we can get this done. We have the people that can get it done. And if the city council leads the way that you can, and we invest, there are programs and initiatives, like Step Up, we started with thirty jobs, then it was a hundred-and-fifty, then two-fifty. With your support, now we could get to four to five hundred. So we know, over an eight-year period, and we've seen then a corresponding decrease in violence of sixty-two percent, forty-four percent citywide during the summer, when kids are working. There's no secret, it's the same stuff that's been talked about since nineteen forty, nineteen fifty, and again in nineteen sixty. We know what needs to be done, and they're measurable, and I'm like all of you, Brandon, these guys, they're doing it, they're asking for support, we know how to connect with them. With your support, we have plans, Heartland Works, Goodwill Works, The Network Works, Black Men United Works, the North Omaha Con- there are places that we can pull this together and make it happen. I'm sorry for the long answer, but we are-
I understand that you're a passionate person, like I am. I just want you to know that four-hundred thousand dollars is not sticker shock.
Yes.
Twenty-two million was, okay? So, but all I'm saying is, don't forget where you live. You live in the United States of King Capital. And in the United States of King Capital, there's immediate investment returns on the ballpark, on the arena. So when you're talking about human capital, it's a little bit trickier to do that. So as you go through your planning, balance your ideal with your real. Don't let the ideal be so out of balance with what the real world does and allows. And that's all I'm asking you to do, is to understand that if you want people from my district to support you, you've got to take smaller incremental steps and show strategic progress. And that's the way it's sold in my district. Right or wrong, good or bad, it's the way it is.
As long as we do it with a sense of urgency, because that's the critical piece. It has to be a sense of urgency, because we're not necessarily living in the same conditions as many of the people that just spoke today. And that's that disconnect, I think, is that sense of urgency in the investment level, but doing it, realizing, I come from the business world as well, I know we turn on investment.
For me, it's not a disconnect.
Yeah, I understand.
I came from a background where I had to stay home from school two weeks because I didn't have shoes. So I came from the rural South, so it's not a disconnect for me. But once again, meet me halfway, because the idealism is great, but there are the real-world issues. And let's take this thing smartly and do a plan that doesn't use guilt, but use a strategic plan. I think that's where you and I can help each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm tired of the broken promises. I'm tired of the broken promises. We were the largest superfund site in the country. We were supposed to at least create two companies. Nothing happened. Nobody was committed. I've heard for forty-two years, we have a problem. I'm tired of hearing we have a problem. Some of us are trying to do some things to fix it. And let me tell you why I know this works. The Omaha Housing Authority has a fraction of the budget that the city of Omaha has, just a fraction, around sixty million dollars. Through our Section Three program that we helped to put together, in the three short years that it has been in operation, let me back up. In the CSO project, women, minorities, poor whites, the amount of money spent over the first five years has been averaging about four percent. Four percent. The Omaha Housing Authority, on the other hand, through its Section Three program, where we have a three-pronged approach to helping people get lifted out of poverty, one is a company that does a business over twenty-five thousand dollars either contributes by some financial contribution, or they hire some of the folks from the housing units. There's several ways that we do it. But at the end of the day, in our, we're going into our strong third year now, we're doing in the neighborhood of twenty-six to twenty-nine percent business with minority and female companies. Where there's will, where there is thoughtful effort, we can get this done. What I think we lack, quite frankly, is the will to do it. Now, if we're going to have the will, then, as you all talked about, everyone ought to be listened to. As I said before, put together a small emerging business ordinance, created the North Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, did all of that. Haven't heard from anyone about what I feel about the way we ought to approach this. We were less than thirty days from a program. Now it's going to probably be another year with the RFPs and RFQs and all of that stuff. It's time to get serious. The Pew Report, Harvard Study, and several others have pointed out, as you know well, Mr. Barney, that poverty is worse now than it was in the sixties. Worse now than it was in the sixties. We're going backward. If we're really going to fix it, and if we're really going to have the conversation that we need to have across the board, including on this council, then let's have it. But let's end the conversation and all the talk about, we know we got a problem. We've been knowing it for forty, fifty years. Time to fix the problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Motion, a second, to lay over the public hearing. Before I call, I'll just say, I think this was a long discussion, but a good discussion today, and I think what we have is unanimous recognition of the problem, we have unanimous recognition, this is going to take some city resources to address, and unanimous commitment to do that. And I think that's a pretty strong message, and that would make today worth it. And continue this discussion with this layover. Motion, a second?
April twenty-eighth.
Four weeks.
Four weeks. Motion, a second? Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Paul?
Thompson?
Gernat?
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's laid over April twenty-eighth, and continue the public hearing. Item number forty-six, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring private property at the purpose of constructing the Maple Street Improvements, Fifty-Ninth to Sixty-third Streets.
Public hearing number forty-six is today, are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Before we move on, I'll just note what this is, and I think we'll be on public consent agenda next week, is the ordinance necessity for the Benson Business Improvement District Project, happening this summer, and we now anticipate that construction to be started in June. So this gets us prepared for the bids to go out here shortly. Next item.
Item forty-seven, authorizing the issue of purchase of Camara Water Solutions for the purchase of chloride for odor control at the wastewater treatment plants.
Public hearing number forty-seven is today, proponents, please. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item forty-eight, ordinance declaring necessity of appropriating properties located in the Clifton Hills Redeveloped Project Plan area for construction of new single-family homes.
Public hearing number forty-eight is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item forty-nine, ordinance approving a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with Block Twenty-Two to implement the flats on Howard Street, tax immitent finance redevelopment project plan generally bounded by Landon Court to Dewey Avenue between Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-Second Streets.
Public hearing number forty-nine is today, proponents, please. Ms. Hadley?
Good afternoon, Bridgette Hadley, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Darren Smith, Art Tech Con Development, Ravine Walker, Woodbine, Iowa, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item fifty, ordinance to establish a new Class B lambeal storage district at eight-oh-five Crown Point Avenue.
Public hearing number fifty is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item fifty-one, ordinance to accept the bid from Lincoln Guard Security Company to provide security services at various city facilities, including community rec centers, swimming pools, nature centers, and marinas.
Public hearing number fifty-one is today, are there any proponents? Are you a proponent?
My name is Dan Knight. I am co-owner of Armored Knights Incorporated. We have actually built our corporate facility in District Two on Twenty-Fourth and Hamilton. We've been there since two thousand and two. So I just, excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. We've seen this sort of last several years fail by taking the worst bid. It demands quality people at these locations, and when you're hiring police officers and you cannot use Omaha police, you've got to use the surrounding law enforcement community. To have them out in the heat at these swimming pools at a minimum of twenty-five dollars, the recommended bid is starting at twenty-five dollars. There is, there is, there's no profit center there. Secondly, when a patrol car is used, they added nothing for the patrol car. So I don't see how this is going to work. We are currently doing it now, because the history of all-in-one security was, they were terminated, Signal Eighty-Eight was terminated, and we're filling in until this contract is decided on. I am requesting that you reject this bid, not because I know them, but I know that this rate is not going to work, hiring off-duty police or law enforcement. Secondly, it's a difficult project. They're in the North and South Omaha. I've been sitting here listening for quite a long time with the things that are going on and the issues that are involved. You've got to pay these law enforcement people a minimum or higher of twenty-five dollars. The bid came in, the winning bid is at twenty-five. We are, as I said, located in District Two, we are also a diversified employer. We have probably twenty-five to thirty percent of our employees are of minority. We're also small business certified by the city and an emerging business certified. I think there's only two companies that did this bidding process that are of that certification, that would be ourselves and Lionsgate. So I just wanted you to hear my point of view on this. If you- If you were to look at the tabulations, everybody that bid for these law enforcement officers are over $30 an hour. The winning bid is at 25 and that, I'm telling you, that's not going to work. I'll be back and film again. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can we get your address for the record?
Excuse me? Dan Knight.
And your address?
2330 Paul Street.
Okay.
That's our corporate headquarters.
Thank you. And as for the clarification, the record, that you're a opponent, obviously.
Yes.
And I think I want to make sure I have time for proponents, if there was somebody else who wanted to speak to that. Okay, thank you.
What I would suggest, if you would ask this outfit what they plan on paying their law enforcement, that's going to be the key. If it's anything under 25, it's not going to work. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents today on this? Seeing none, public hearing's closed.
Item 52, ordinance to accept the bid of Miller &amp; Sons Golf Carts for easy-go gas golf carts for the golf division of Parks.
Public hearing number 52 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 53, ordinance to accept the bid of Ed M. Feld Equipment Company to provide firefighter boots and gloves to the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing number 53 is today. Are there any proponents?
No.
Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 54, special ordinance allowing special tax on lots and piece of real estate to cover the cost of constructing sidewalks in SWR 2014-01.
Public hearing number 54 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule 70, Agenda Items 55 through 56 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Item 57, Metropolitan Entertainment Convention Authority Financial Statement and Independent Audit Reports for the years ended June 30, 2014 and 2013.
Motion received and placed on file.
Before I call roll to, I see Mr. Curtis is not here today, but I just wanted to point out, we did talk about this in Finance Committee and he confirmed there was, he saw no issues either in his committee work nor obviously with his public document with his year-end statement. So I just wanted to add that to the record. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
57 is placed on file. Pursuant City Council Rule 70, public hearing on Agenda Item 58 shall be held on the second reading. Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
433. We stand adjourned.